Ladies and gents, we're live.
All right, let's call this meeting in order seventeen oh five. Five oh five PM.
I do military time. I'm like, what's he talking about?
Five oh five, yeah, sorry, five oh five PM is the time. And if you can get down, that's great.
No public comment.
You go, go all.
Chairperson Andy Davenport.
President.
Vice Chair Lydia Johns.
President.
Commissioner Thomas Palm.
Chair.
Commissioner Tamara Robertson. Commissioner Chris Sungay.
President.
We have a board.
Standing, and then for those of you who don't know, should I introduce Roger?
Sure.
Roger is our acting city attorney. Anyone else can jump in, my understanding is former city attorney Bud has turned into the representative nation, I saw something about that. And so Roger Gordon is here with us, at least temporarily. I believe he's been the city attorney here previously and has a long and glorious history here, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I'm back.
He's back. All right. Let's see, and you said no public comments?
No, sir.
All right, the first item on our consent calendar then is to approve the regular zoning meeting minutes from December seventh. If you happen to entertain a motion for that.
I'm going to be approved the minutes from December seventh.
Can we take well on that?
Great.
Ready.
Vice Chair Lydia Johns.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas Palm.
Aye.
Commissioner Chris Sungay.
Aye.
And Chair Davenport.
Aye.
There we go, now we have reports from officers and council liaisons, starting with our city manager Kevin.
The ordinance review committee met yesterday, and they were given the document for the short-term rentals. And they were charged with looking for maybe some inconsistencies or duplications or that sort of item of nature. And they came up with four that they wanted me to relate to you. The first one was in section one fifty-six dot zero zero nine.
Are these in our, are these somewhere?
No, no, yeah, they are not in the. Packet, sure.
Well, that's okay, I need to be dealt with.
Yeah, I can email this to you.
That would be great, it would, because we don't have that.
Right, it was, like I said, it was yesterday, yes, yesterday, and so we didn't have time to.
Okay.
And.
But you know what they said.
I know exactly what they said.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. One fifty-six, one zero zero nine, review the SDR definition and make sure that is updated with any future ordinances.
Okay.
The first one is one one zero dot zero two, they said bread and breakfast defined as a hotel, not an SDR.
So let me, I'm just gonna interject one thing, there, when I was doing my research and drafting these ordinances, there kept being a reference, Roger probably knows what this is, but they would reference the definition according to some entity. And then I could go to that entity and look it up. And so I briefly toyed with the idea of putting specific definitions in our ordinance. But then I quickly realized, well, I'm gonna define this, and I need to define this, and I need to define this. So we, this is something that we can look at. If I didn't include it in the ordinances, I'll let you all know what that defining body is. But we don't need to define STRs, we don't need to define hotels, we don't need to define bed and breakfast, it's already defined.
And stay long?
Yeah, it's stay long.
Okay.
We just need to point to it, or copy and paste it if we want to do that.
Their second thing that they want to tell you or to let you know is that, then question, will STRs be subject to any hotel occupancy tax if there is one? Of course, they wouldn't, that definition, but they wanted me to let you know that. And then number four, the biggest one, there's a typo on the second to last page, there's no number one, and it starts with number two.
And, of course.
I submit my resignation. Oh no, you're fired.
Those were the only issues they brought, that they brought up with reviewing that.
Okay, perfect, great. So again, just as a quick reminder, our previous tasking had been draft an ordinance, get ORC review, get legal review, and then have a public hearing, finalize our documents, send it to the city council. So what we just received is ORC's feedback, their specific tasking was not to review the whole thing, it was, hey, make sure that, because we started with with an ordinance from Arlington, make sure that it integrates into our existing ordinance. You can't just copy and paste everything, you better have it flow in and everything. So that was their main assignment, was to make sure that, A, it, B, to help figure out where in our ordinances this will fit, it will be a new chapter, probably one fifty-six of zero XX. And then C, to make sure we weren't contradicting other things that are already within our ordinances, such as if we say something in our SDR document, it's like, hey man, there's a curfew at nine o'clock, that sounds after nine, and you know, you can park wherever you want, and actually, hold on, that contradicts our sound ordinance, our party ordinance. So that was the tasking, so we either needed to make sure that was done, or put some sort of legal clause that Roger did up with, that is, the documents we received, although, you know, whatever, for those commercial documents. So we now have ORC feedback, so we will get a copy of what Kevin just read to us, and then you all can contemplate that. And that will be something that I will incorporate into these draft documents, so that we'll have a new revision. And then before we submit anything to the city council, we'll make sure that those recommendations are incorporated. Okay, any other discussion about that item? All right. Bob, you are, are you our planning and zoning liaison, is that your?
I'm getting the state compression that I am.
He will be.
He will be, great.
All goes according to plan.
Is there anything you would like to report at this time?
I don't have anything extra to report, in, since coming on in the last month, listening to, I've actually been on planning and zoning with more than all.
Oh, great, yes. I'm good.
So I have a little bit of experience in, and it's always fun to see the history of things over time. And so I dealt a little bit with your field, it was interesting, and we dealt a little bit with some, some, you may not even have known about the tiny house project over on Pleasant Valley Road, which would include a lot of the ETJ ordinances that we deal with, especially as far as trees are concerned and development, development plan. So, but I'm just here to listen and learn, more than anything else, and if I have any input, I will make sure I raise my hand.
Perfect, well, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any reports from any special committees? Any special orders?
Yep.
Any unfinished business and general orders?
No.
All right, we'll move on to new business, item five, workshop to review the draft short-term rental documents. So the documents that are in this packet that you have in front of you are exactly the same as you saw them last time. Nothing has been done to them.
Okay.
So you do not need to spend any time going through there, you're certainly welcome to, but they are, they are the same documents, there's nothing to change. So when Kevin or Suzanne send us ORC's recommendation, then you can take this packet home with you and figure out where, where those things belong. And then if you have any specific feedback, you're welcome to send it to me, you can send it just to me, or you can send it to a group where you want. And then I'll make sure those get incorporated, and then I will update the, the draft numbers, the dates, and make sure everyone's aware that, hey, this is a new document, and here's what's changed from the previous version.
If he would, if he would just send it to Andy and me, perfect, that'd be the way to go. That way I'll have a record of it, and Andy will have a record of it, and we won't have a, the others with.
Roll them wrong?
So, Mr. Chairman? Exactly.
This was start on page eighteen, that's the theater.
It starts.
It's the ordinance, right?
Well, the, it starts on, it starts on page seven, yeah, exactly. Our documents that we had drafted relating to STRs look like they start on page seven.
Okay.
And go all the way through page forty-nine.
But we still don't have a date for the public hearing, do we?
We do not, at this time.
So unless we have a date and actually have a hearing, we can't submit our final to city council, right?
That's, so, so again, this, this is what we came up with, and then we're supposed to get legal input, we're supposed to get ORC input, and we're supposed to get public input, right? And then we will incorporate those changes, and then we'll bring it to a vote here, and if we vote to send it up to public council, that's kind of the process. So that's, that's the pathway we had been going down. We now have a city manager, which we didn't when we started this, and we now have a new city attorney that may have some different views or opinions. So our, our, our marching orders are still the same, so Roger, if, you don't need to do anything tonight, if you have something you'd like, you certainly can. But, but if it's okay with Jeff, if you could give this a once-over, the draft documents that we come up with so far, and then kind of give us your take on whether, yeah, this is at least a good starting point, keeping in mind that it will continue to evolve, and certainly you will have a significant role to play once it reaches city council, or gives any sort of final voting. So public, P and D is, again, we're just trying to get this ball rolling, we're just trying to get a project, a product out there, so that we can finally make some headway on that.
So what's holding out standing a date for the public hearing?
Quite lenient, thank you for that. Well, we need, we need, we need Roger to look over the document, and I want him to give his legal opinion, okay? The next, and he would send that to Andy and McFinn, or just Andy? Well, I can send it to Andy, but certainly I'll visit with the committee on it, and I got to give you all what feedback I can now, because you deserve it. Sounds like this is me dragging off for a while.
But you can have your.
Yeah, so, you know, the basic gist, I'm gonna, I'm gonna email the committee these two opinions, which are the guardrails that have come from the Second Court of Appeals and the Third Court of Appeals on short-term rentals. They're kind of the leading cases. And they're both situations where the city had attempted to prohibit STRs in complete districts or citywide, or procedurally, as it is with the city of Austin, had not measured twice and cut once, okay? And, and there's a particular, I don't expect you guys, unless you're masochistic, to read a hundred pages of case law that I'm gonna email. But if you'd like to, they're helpful, not only telling you what, what courts have been reluctant to allow, but they also provide a roadmap on what good regulations should look like. The takeaway that I want y'all to understand today is that courts consider private property owners to have, and this is a direct quote, a fundamental and settled property right to lease one's real estate under the most desirable terms, okay? It's considered a fundamental right. So I'll tell you all right now that any efforts to completely prohibit STRs in any district is something that I would likely recommend would be subject to what they call strict scrutiny, meaning it's very challenging to do it, right? Not impossible, the challenge.
And when you say the district, are you talking about our individual zones that we have?
Yeah, like, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this right now, where the proposed draft, you know, like, the amendment says SF one, short-term rentals are not allowed. SF two, short-term rentals are not allowed, except three. Those, those folks who own property in there still have the same fundamental right to maximize the leasehold value of their property, which includes the right to put their property on Airbnb or whatever, in the SDR. Now, it doesn't mean that you guys can't still adopt regulations that require inspections and permitting and all that, that stuff that I had seen in here. And I'll address those in greater detail prior to the next meeting. But I think y'all should know right now that the feedback we're getting from me, and this is not a personal preference in any way, shape, or form, it's just what, what the court of appeals who have touched on this have said, is blanket prohibitions within districts are gonna, you're really gonna have to demonstrate a need. And then the, for the cities that have gotten shot down on those, if they came and they said, well, we believe we have problems with noise, we have problems with on-street parking, we have problems with trash. And what the court said is, well, if the city already has regulations that address all that, you don't get to tell a private property owner that they're not allowed to rent their, their house out because of those issues. This is an enforcement issue, right? And so I, I, I want to prepare y'all, because you deserve that, the bandit ripped off, that my bias will be that any efforts to blanketly prohibit STRs, we're really gonna have to make sure that we've got our ducks in a row before we do that.
So we, we were told a couple of things, which, which sound, in my brain, contradictory to that, which, again, I, you're the expert.
I'm not.
In this room.
In this room, you're the expert.
So, but, but one of those was that, that there was a partial agreement, it, it's going to be more legally challenging if you are to make a city-wide, there's no STR allowed. However, if you can come up with specific zones and justify why in those zones, those would be good rationale at STRs, then you're not, you're not a city saying, we do not allow STRs, you're saying, yeah, we get it, we allow STRs, but we have rules and regulations, and we have reasons for having the places that we want. So to that end, that's, that's that four we already talked about, that, that was kind of built that way. And, and to try and accommodate that, to try to make it, it needs to appear that the city was, was trying to be open to that, is why we also made a tentative recommendation of allowing STRs in that multifamily section, which, which we can come back to, but, but that was.
Talk about the markets. Yeah, well, that's not gonna happen just because we can't STR a market in this room. So I mean, that, that, that's just gonna, like.
That may be, but, but, but hold on, let's, I appreciate that, but let's, but we'll drill down to that, and that's fine. And Tom and I had a discussion at our last meeting, we said, listen, the end result of our work may be that there are no STRs in the city. Or it may be that there's STRs everywhere in the city, we don't really know that, but we need to at least get this started. And then the second thing, I don't know if you saw the, the legal, and I don't know what I'm quoting, it was state code two eleven or something, but Kay Fries at their last meeting suggested in their comments, hey, why don't you do it like, if this guy over here, as long as he meets his requirement, then he can have an STR, but this person can't, and the feedback that I got was, no, 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 everything within itself, that's exactly why we have districts. You can't have, if you, what applies to this house in this district has to apply to this house, you can't, you can't do things within a district. Now, you can say this district can do this, but it applies to everything in that district. Now, this district can be totally different and do this, but it applies to everything in that district. So, so the, A, the, just the thought of trying to have a process where, yeah, you can have an STR, sorry, you can't, for whatever reason, seems like a political and legal quagmire to me, versus, yes, SF four, inhabit, here's why, this is thought out, the community was built specifically for that, right? That, that sounds, to my brain, more legally comfortable, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the foundation upon which this discussion should be, should be an understanding that Texas courts tend to protect private property rights over governmental regulation, whether you believe in that or not, that's, that's the outcome that tends to occur more often than not. And so if we tell somebody in SF one that you're not allowed to lease your property on Airbnb or VRBO, if they were to apply for a permit to do so, let's say maybe we adopted that structure and be denied, I think that there, there would be a strong chance that a court would rule in their favor. Now, we're in the Fourth Court of Appeals here, the Hayes County's in a different district, so the Fourth Court has not touched on this yet. And the Fourth Court of Appeals could end up with a different outcome than the Second and the Third, that, that happens all the time. In fact, that's, that's what leads to a Supreme Court decision that tends to set the law in, in, you know, statewide. You know, my takeaway with no policy preference or bias injected at this point in time is that telling somebody in SF one that they're not allowed to STR their property would be a dicey proposition, okay? Adopting a set of regulations that require inspections and permits and, and reporting and fees is, is a perfectly acceptable approach to regulating STRs, but blanket prohibitions need to be justified. And it may be that this is something that's already been discussed, but what would the justification be for prohibiting it?
Well, it was part of the comprehensive master plan that went out to the community, and Lydia can probably speak more to this, but this is a retirement community, predominantly eighty percent older people, that have said, listen, man, the whole reason I moved to Wood Creek is to get out of the city, to get out of the hustle and bustle, I want the silence, I want the serenity, I want this peaceful retirement community. I don't, I didn't buy this house, so that the people next door to me didn't have a bachelor party.
But the people who bought the house next door may have bought it so they can host bachelor parties?
Maybe, but, yeah.
And then, and the challenge that we, that we confront is, whose fundamental right trumps the other, right?
Right.
Does, does, does your fundamental right to live in peace and silence mean that your neighbors can't blast Black Sabbath at all hours of the day? Well, that's why we have a noise warning. Does, does your personal fundamental right to not have to drive around cars when you're pulling near your driveway mean that your neighbors shouldn't be able to park on the street? Well, that's why we have a parking board, right? But the question is, taking away what courts have been considering to be a fundamental right for people to maximize the leasehold value, there's gotta be some, some other justification for it. And, and it exists, right? I have not looked into it in detail yet, but I, I think we should, I, I would encourage those who like lengthy reading, I'm gonna email all y'all these opinions here as soon as this meeting is over. And, and each, each of the cases, each of the two opinions, fifty-page opinions, I've got a one-page summary that can help y'all kind of just digest it quickly. And, and those opinions, if you boil down to brass tacks, demonstrate to me that it's a pretty difficult proposition for a city to adopt blanket prohibition even within districts, right? I've said it can't be done, but if it is gonna be done, as you'll see in kind of a roadmap that are set out in from these opinions, there's a, you know, I said measured twice, cut once, you really gotta demonstrate some justification for doing so above and beyond parking noise. Because parking noise and traffic, that stuff applies whether you're renting the property, whether your owner occupied, whether I buy a house for my, you know, for my mother with me, right? Everybody has to follow those same rules. The question of, are we permitted to lease your property out, is, is where we get into this dicey proposition of telling somebody that they can't do that, and that constitutes, you know, a restriction on this fundamental right. It's not an easy, it's not an easy question, you know, it really is not.
But we, so it's not established law, yeah, is it, is it a matter of the Supreme Court to look around at these cases, or not?
Yeah, so neither of the two cases that I'm gonna email to you have been appealed to the Supreme Court. So the Fourth Court of Appeals has not talked on, on this issue yet, so we may be the ones to set the law, right? In the event that you guys ultimately make a recommendation, and the city council ultimately chooses to adopt prohibitions, again, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, you cannot do that. But in the event that somebody challenges that, and we work our way up to that court of appeals, I think that the Second and Third Courts' analysis will be pretty guiding in what we expect the Fourth Court to do. Fourth Court's a little bit more conservative court than the Third Court, definitely. The Second Court, you're probably, you're probably about the same. But this, this fundamental right is the thing that we're just, we're ultimately gonna keep running into this, you know, and, and, you know, the, the challenge, what the courts typically said is, look, don't ban enforce, right? If you've got problems with noise and parking and, and, and curfews, then enforce, enforce the regulations you have, which.
So I think, I think, and I'm speaking more on a personal level and help, but we, the city hired an enforcement officer for some period of time, which my take is let over like the left will.
Was that the constable, or was that?
No.
Separate, okay.
Individual.
Yeah, and, and, and as soon as that happened, you had citizens complaining, like, I've got someone riding around peeking at me in the alley, just waiting to look for a reason to write me up, and we're spending our city finances now, you know, paying for a vehicle and paying for the salary, like, this is crazy, this is taking effect. So if.
You know, the same argument you made when you were talking about inspections, right? You know, if we're gonna be hiring, you know, somebody, we'll be going and inspecting all these homes, no, we don't do that if you rent your property out for twelve months. We don't require somebody to apply for a permit, we don't require them to pay a fee. The question is, why do we do it differently if it's thirty days or less? And, and, and that, that presents an opportunity, right? If we can demonstrate why it's different, why it is, the fact that Wood Creek is a, primarily an older population, where people had expectations of our master plan and what Wood Creek's original, you know, retirement community vibe was intended to do for, I, I think that may present an opportunity to differentiate Wood Creek from your Arlington and your Bryan call stations, I'd say, right? I just, you know, I, what I, what I want y'all to be prepared for the next meeting is prepare for me to chop this, send up pretty significantly.
Well, we don't, that's fine, two, two things, number one, again, we kind of have two tasking, one is to modify our existing ordinance, and something I would suggest to you and to everyone, that something as simple as taking our existing ordinance, whether it's legally enforceable or not, but just writing in there, SDR not allowed, SDR not allowed, probably many people would, just by looking at that, be like, oh crap, I was thinking of doing an SDR, but it said right here in the ordinance that an SDR is not allowed, so I guess I won't.
No, you can do that, and if we, if we make that recommendation, and the council adopts it, and somebody's got a problem with it, they're entitled to enter at the courthouse, follow laws.
Yeah, so, so I think.
This is unsettled, this is an unsettled area.
Yeah, but, but I guess my point is, A, we have to do something, so we have to figure out what we're gonna do, and B, something as simple as, I mean, most people have no interest in hiring an attorney and going out, so if the will of the people is to not have STRs, and, and we at least come up with an ordinance that regulates them, and, and we have zoning, which is where they're allowed, where they're not allowed, I'm betting that alone would probably take care of a vast majority of the STR issues. Now, sure, are there gonna be one or two people that are like, hey man, I think there's a bunch of grandma, I'm not, I'm not, we're gonna go to court, and maybe, yeah, maybe. But, but for us, for this commission, I mean, we, we need to do something.
Sure.
So, and, and if you're saying that this isn't, this isn't it, then we don't want to spend our time going down this, this trail, you know? If, if, the, if the answer legally is, no, this, we'll never be able to find this, we need to go completely.
Can I ask a stupid question?
You bet.
Is there any reason why you couldn't change the language slightly? If there are good regulations in place, if there's good permitting in place, or everything is in place, all the rules are in place for the operation of SDR, for the zoning, zoning districts to say, SDRs are discouraged? As opposed to.
Maybe not allowed. You could just say STRs must be licensed pursuant to the provisions of this chapter, right? And, and then your license provisions, you know, just at first glance, you know, it, it's a pretty reasonable set of regulations. For those cities that have adopted and continue to enforce STR regulations, then it's pretty consistent, right? I'm just, I'm looking into the crystal ball, and I'm, and again, I don't know if there are, you know, individual properties here that even say, oh, no, you know. that even say, oh, you know, twenty-seven Songbird Drive, you know, they've been Airbnb-ing their property nonstop and they're talking about, well, if you go tell those people that they are no longer permitted to Airbnb their property, that's one thing. If you go tell those people, future efforts to STR your property requiring to obtain a permit and license and inspection and this and that, that's a whole different beast, right? In more quick, more regulation. It's, you're not prohibiting somebody from exercising their fundamental right to maximize the leasehold value of their property.
But you can demand that they be licensed?
Absolutely.
And inspected?
Absolutely.
And that doesn't have to be a cost center, that could be a profit center, right? For the city. Or can it not be a profit center?
Not licensing inspection.
If it's inspected, costs seventy-five dollars. If a city charges a hundred, it's expensive.
Well, but there's administrative fees for the city, right? There's city staff time required. And so I wouldn't consider that a cost center in any particular form. Even if our revenues exceed our expenses.
It would cover the cost.
Yeah.
We could cover the cost of whatever that cost was, including staff, city staff time. And so it'd be in that zero probably to the bottom line.
So a concern I have with what you said, whether thirty days or one year rent leases, or we did apply in that maybe somebody could contest whatever we came up to and say, well, you're not charging a long-term renter a requirement to have a space assigned in bedrooms.
Yeah.
How have the courts looked at that question?
In terms of STRs or just in general?
Short-term versus in general?
Yeah, I've never seen a city, and I'd say that it hasn't happened, I've never seen a city that had to license twelve-month leases. I'd have to look into that.
What I'm saying is, an STR owner could challenge a city based on the fact that they treated him unequally from his neighbor who had three years.
So one of the, one of the things to also add on to this foundation of information is how an STR owner gets into the courtroom, okay? STR owner doesn't get into the courtroom on hypotheticals, right? The city is about to adopt an ordinance that would impact my business on their way to the courthouse. It doesn't work like that, right? They'd have to first come to the city, apply for a permit or apply for a variance, get turned down, rejected or otherwise, and then at that point they could go to the courthouse and move away, right? It's ripe, I mean, that they refer to. Here, you know, it doesn't look like you guys are drawing any differentiation between any district as to the licensing permit. If you have an STR, here's what would be required, right? Regardless of where you're located. And so, you know, I think that the feedback that you're going to get from me will simply say, it would be, I would say, proceed with caution if you're going to prohibit within a district. And if somebody within a district says, I have an Airbnb, I've been Airbnb-ing it and I want to continue Airbnb-ing it, well then come apply for variance. Explain to the P and Z or Board of Adjustment why it is that you believe that you should be having variance from the zoning regulation. And let's, you know, this process is in place, like, we have a process already in place. The idea that we need to adopt new regulations, I think makes sense if you're going to have a licensing itself or permitting scheme. But your one big takeaway is, anything without enforcement is kaput.
Exactly.
And so, and so that's a conversation, you know, probably with the city council on how do we enforce. And that'll be something that I'll touch on in my analysis for the next meeting.
All right, I have a question. Say this person gets permitted, they have the Airbnb, you know, STR, it's approved for a year. During that year, there is complaint, a voice complaint, documentation of, you know, too many people at the property, all in, you know, accordance to what has been lined out for them and they are violating continually there. And then you withhold the permit for following years.
Yeah.
Do you have grounds at that?
Sure, why not? Under that theory, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, hypotheticals are challenged, right? But under that theory, yeah, let's, you know, let's take that another way. What do you do for that same situation if it's owner occupied, right? A heavy metal band moves in to SF1
Good point.
and starts throwing massive razors, parties all night, cars parked in the front lawn, you know? You go enforce them on a nuisance basis. You go to the district court or the county court and you say, this property is a nuisance. We want to impose an injunction against them to prevent them from doing, you know, this, that or the other thing. There's, what I'm getting at is that the tools are already within the city's toolkit to address a lot of these issues. The question is, do we need two ambers? You know, do we need, you know, two jigsaws? You know, maybe we do, right? Maybe there is a need to adopt these additional sets of regulations. And the devil's in the details. I do not yet know the details and perhaps the city has that. But I'd be curious to know, do we have an idea of how many actual STRs are out there? Is there a specific, particular set of properties that are being more problematic? Have there been citations issued? You know, I tend to be of the opinion that regulation is preferred over prohibition. And prohibition, a fundamental right creates, it makes a hair on the back of my neck, man. Okay? That's not to say it can't be done. I certainly have got no qualms whatsoever about pursuing that course of action. And if somebody has a problem with it, there are procedures in place for those people to raise their concerns.
So that's say, we have a problem and you go to a small claims court or whatever, you get a judgment saying, yeah, you know, you can find this guy a thousand dollars for violation, whatever. He probably won't be paying for it, he'll probably find a lien on the property. That's more than likely, he practically could have had to come back. So it probably won't be any money coming into the city. It's about nothing, the guy sells his property, which I mean, you get your lien paid off.
Yeah, I mean, you run into issues with homesteads, right? If somebody's homestead, a lien on somebody's homestead, it doesn't mean a whole lot of anything. If they were made in proper, if they sell it, yeah, then you get your lien paid off, right? The file is called this, and it's a property. Enforcement is the key here, again, whether.
Right now, maybe educate us on this. So right now, I mean, the city has ordinance in place. You know, if you're going to add a second story to your one-story home, you can't just do it. You got to get a permit from the city.
That's right.
And it's got to be inspected and everything.
That's right.
So what happens right now, like, if I go to the first story of my home?
I go down to Pace County, county or district court, depending on the circumstances.
But first, someone, Kevin knocks on my door and says, you may not be aware of it, but you actually can't build it. I mean, we got to talk about this.
Yeah, I mean, in certain circumstances, we have to talk first, but sometimes, you know, shoot first, talk later.
Y'all have to be people.
You know, and largely what I've said.
I feel like in our ordinances, it's already specified, like, you'll be charged a thousand dollars a day.
Yeah, a lot of our ordinances were adopted at the time that we had a municipal court. The city got rid of their municipal court in?
No, the judge quit.
Okay. The city dismantled their municipal court.
So we just.
Two years ago.
So it's, you know, we're just.
Can we just hire a judge?
We got to, if we hire a judge, we got a municipal court.
I mean, that's going to be part of my recommendation, you know? Any licensing or permitting structure, you got to have a judge that can help enforce. You know, and really, that's what we.
We're actually in conversation, we're in loose conversation with the chairman.
And that conversation's been happening for a while and I think it's a good idea.
But I mean, we, like, so if someone starts building illegally or not in accordance with our ordinances right now, like.
District court.
Okay.
Yeah, so district court's expensive. You don't want to have to go to district court for overgrown lawns, parking lot. But right now, that's the option that we have.
To your question about sort of history of STRs, I mean, it's fairly limited here.
Yeah.
There was the one that was next door to the Davenport's. There's one over on Augusta Lane that is, and neither one of them are being operated as the R anymore. So I, it's not saying that there aren't any operating, but right now the two that were kind of famously operating are not.
Yeah.
You know, so for the most part, we not had STR because nobody wants STR. So they're not in my house, not my neighbor's house.
Yeah, and look, I mean.
It's sort of self-regulated so far, but it's just.
It's a matter of time.
It is.
Well, and the, you know, the barrier of entry, so to speak, right? For an STR, in the event that P and Z ultimately wrecks and the council ultimately adopts this licensing and permitting scheme, this is not insignificant. This is, you know, this carries a significant, you know, barrier of entry. And it's one that I would argue, you know, in lieu of prohibition, raises the barrier to entry. And somebody decides they're going to start Airbnb-ing their property without a permit, then you go after their court. You know, and municipal court can be that app. Just wondering if there's any distinctions that can be made between a homestead and a, someone living on a primary residential, if there's any. For purposes of STRs? Yeah, not really. The only difference would be a non-residential property, an investment property, we'll just use that as a term. It's a lot easier to impose the liens on those properties than it is on homesteads.
Is there maybe a way to add an additional fee or something like that that the city can kind of use?
Now, see, I probably would advise against differentiating on fee structure, right? On the fee structure, you want consistency. Consistency, it makes it a lot more legally defensive, right? And because of that language that, again, I'll email this to y'all during the meetings over, the fundamental right to maximize the leasehold value, well, that applies to investment properties as much as it does to a homestead as well.
So we have a half a dozen property that are being grandfathered as STRs. Would basically be required to go through the licensing, the various.
I would argue that they would be. Would be, yes. Yes, we're not, a grandfathering is for use, right? And we're not, we're not saying your use is changing, but licensing, permitting, inspection, that's all a health and safety issue. You know, we're not, again, we're not a profit center. But we're doing this to ensure that the ingress and egress, your buyer, you know, codes. You don't want a property being used as, you don't want any property being occupied that doesn't comply with the residential code or anything like that. So, you know, the inspection checklist and the general concept of a licensing permitting scheme, I think is a very viable solution to an STR law. Call it a intermediate step before prohibition. And, you know, properties that don't comply don't get to rent. Properties that don't, they continue renting without permitting and licensing, they find themselves get dragged into court. All of a sudden, the profit of having an investment property goes away when you're having to hire an attorney, you're having to defend the case and press paid fines and be subject to an injunction. You know, and ultimately, cities, if you view it in the concept of a nuisance, right? A, the meth house, the meth lab house, right? How do cities stop that from happening? They go to a court, district court, they get an injunction saying, these activities are prohibited. And if that injunction is not complied with, you get daily fines. Those daily fines can be up to five thousand dollars a day under Chapter fifty-four of the local government code, okay? And having gone through that process in different counties before, it's a very strong tool for cities. But that's a very extreme example, right? Like you said, STRs are becoming more common and it's going to be kind of more the rule rather than the exception. And so a licensing inspection permitting scheme is a unquestionable smart first step. I think that step should be employed. And again, I'll provide feedback once I've had a chance to digest the whole thing.
How strident you can would be, I mean, hotels are required to have a sprinkler system for acquiring protection. Would be excessive.
Yeah, you know, I, 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 I thought, I don't know, honestly. I'm not sure if the city could require a short-term rental property owner to install sprinkler system. I think that's something that, again, makes those hairs on the back of my neck, man.
Okay, yeah. Because that would be for anybody with an investment ready, have a go-by week.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we were supposed to have working fire, you know, smoke detectors and.
Sure, well, that is a must, right? You apply for an STR permit, we go ahead and see you have a non-functual smoke detector, you're not getting an STR. And that, but that's also something that maybe a couple of batteries can fix, right?
Interesting.
I think you guys have a good framework in place. I think that you're going to get feedback from me the next meeting that says your licensing permitting scheme is a solid approach. I am going to say enforcement is key, right? And then, again, you're going to get, you're going to hear me say blanket prohibitions within districts are are something that concern me, but that doesn't mean that you guys can't adopt those changes or make the recommendation to adopt those changes.
And when you look at that email that I sent that had that state code two eleven, the.
Yeah.
The way I wrote it, it was like, oh, well, look at that, seems to fall back, you can't.
Yeah, that actually brings up another good topic. One of the things that, you know, my twenty years of representing cities, especially with with the turn of the calendar year in January, I think it might make sense for, if you guys haven't done it yet, I don't know how long everyone sat on the P and Z, but I would like to suggest to people that they go through the Attorney General's Open Government Training. My experience is that there are some topics that are coming up on the agendas that lead to very hot-button, emotional responses to issues. And I would like to make sure that the people that I'm representing have gone through that training because it provides y'all a get-out-of-jail-free card in the event of an Open Meetings Act incidental violation. So we'll talk about that, yeah, we'll talk about that.
No, not yet.
Yeah.
Okay, I was going to say, yeah, it was a requirement, so I don't know if you stand with tracking, but when we were put on this, it was required that we go to our.
To the online, yeah. I mean, it's a one hour and two hour, depending on who you do it with. And something that I want to make sure everybody has done, because, I mean, this is one of these situations where, you know, if, you know, let's fast forward to March twenty twenty-three, you guys have adopted a licensing permitting structure and there is somebody who's unhappy with that. And that person, you know, may employ any number of tools to get what they want, which may include complaints about public meetings issues. So my encouragement, my suggestion is, is let's use Kevin as a conduit for all communications, right? Run everything through Kevin's office, let Kevin distribute, and we'll have the open meetings issues. I'm going to take a look at this. You guys, are you all monthly here, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, within a couple of weeks, I'll have feedback for you on all this. Okay? You will not be dealing with eight-month turnarounds like occurred last year, okay?
So in light of this, I'm questioning the value of public hearing.
Well.
Of course, a public hearing will give us a ninety-nine percent feedback statement, no STR.
So the public hearing does not necessarily have to occur at the P and Z level. I think it's a good idea, I think it should be done, but the requirement of state laws, the number of hearings, not necessarily the location. Whether it occurs in February or in March, I tend to think that March probably would be better because, you know, you guys are going to be seeing my proposed changes next month for the first time, right? And if those changes are acceptable to you guys, then you go out and you provide notice and you set up the public hearing for March.
Well, and that's something I would like the feedback from the public, you know, hey man, if you could pick, would you say that we need to regulate, you know, zones? Or would you say that we just need to focus on, you know?
Yeah, and so anytime you're changing the zoning ordinance, just somebody is going to have to go to the public hearing.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
The only other thing I'll say, well, I'll say two things briefly. One, I'm not scared of a battle, so if you guys need to take your gloves off, then.
Good.
Let's rumble. And then number two, I think, again, I'm trying to come at this from a long-term perspective. And I appreciate what you're saying. Sometimes it takes a little while for it to percolate down into my brain.
Sure.
So it'll be a day or two and then I'll be like, oh, you have to much better about what you're saying. But I feel on some level that STR is Pandora's box. And sometimes you go down a pathway and you just can't undo it. And you find yourself a few years from now thinking, crap, man, if we'd have done this differently, if only we'd have done this instead of this, we wouldn't be in this pickle.
Sure.
And so I'm trying to be as forward-thinking as possible as if we're looking back thinking, what can we do right now so that we're not freaking ourselves five years from now, ten years from now? And I think conceptually, if we were to not try to regulate it by zones, but do it individually and then in, for example, zone SF1, five years from now, we had ten houses that were STRs and then we came back and said, this is not working, we're going to now. And then we came back and said, this is not working. We're gonna now say this whole zone, you can't do it. That would be disastrous.
As opposed to just doing it from the outset?
As opposed to doing it from the outset, saying, listen, man, no, they're not allowed in this zone. And then if we get enough legal pushback and we take it to court and someone says that we can't do that, then we come back and say, hey, city, we tried, you know, we heard you, we listened to you, no one wanted it. We wanted to set it up by zones, but the Supreme Court says we can't do that, so.
Yeah, I mean, look, there's, there's, there's absolutely nothing wrong, uh, when, when the Board of Court of Appeals has not set their guardrails. Uh, I, I would not in any way, shape or form, uh, uh, suggest that this council, of course, this committee for the city council doesn't have the opportunity to adopt regulations. I'd simply say, we need to be, do, do so with a, you know, open eyes and an understanding that the two courts of appeals that have rule on this have said A, B, C. And, uh, I, I, like you, you know, I, I, I tend to not shy away at all from the battle. The rules that apply in Austin and the rules that apply in Arlington don't necessarily fit with, you know? And, and that alone, they provide justification, you know, for, for adopting a, a more stringent set of regulations, um.
But, but that, if it would go counter to the prevailing sort of legal opinions, we're gonna have to have a fairly large-sized budget for, to be, to defend this city against lawsuits. And I don't know how, how big of an amount of budget, uh, but it's probably gonna be pretty expensive. I'm, I'm sure there would be individuals who would.
Yeah, so, so I would think, so my experience to Austin is that this type of suit will likely, uh, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk about it because I don't wanna manifest it into occurring.
I understand.
Uh, but, but, uh, you know, you guys have, have, uh, TML coverage for a reason, you know? Uh, lawsuits are a part of doing business for cities, especially cities that are shifting and adjusting to the changing times. You know, somebody that comes in and builds a, a Bitcoin mining operation in a, in a home. Is that a commercial operation or is that a residential operation? You know, these are things that didn't exist ten years ago that are coming up today. And I certainly, and, and, and would. If there's something that makes me say, you guys definitely gonna get sued, definitely gonna lose, it's gonna cost you a whole bunch of money, you're gonna hear that. But I, I'm not going to tell you guys, because it's your responsibility, that you can or can't do something simply because of the possibility of getting sued on.
Um, so Moss, to get to your point, I don't know that there's anything other than ORC's recommendations, which are minimal. I don't know that there's anything for us to be doing with these documents right now. And then as far as holding a public hearing, um.
We have to wait until we get.
It, it, it seems like that would be prudent is, is to.
You say like that, I think based on what I've heard today, I think we really need to think hard about if we're gonna have every district entertain not allowed, not allowed, we need to have pretty serious discussion about that, so I don't think it's a.
I have a question right now.
Totally. Yeah, but, but even on the other two districts where you are going to allow it, if you are going to adopt a licensing permitting structure, you're still gonna have to have it along with you.
Yeah, okay, here's my other question. Instead of saying not allowed, can you set, allow them, but up to a certain percentage of the area?
Sure, why not?
That's right.
You know, because once you get too many, yeah.
Yeah, and that actually happens quite a bit, hundred and eighty days, uh, it, it tends to be the, uh, kind of the, 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 uh, full point, uh, in a lot of cities where, you know, any over a hundred and eighty days requires something different.
Oh, rented days, you mean, oh, rented days?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm basically have the time, there are different requirements?
That's right. Well, or it's a, or it's a secondary level of inspections, right? Or, uh, secondary permitting requirement. You know, as long as you apply the rules equally and fairly, uh, you, 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 you covered yourself on eighty-five percent of the claims that are gonna exist now, right?
Okay.
My concern is that when you say, in this square, you can do it, in this square, you can do it, everywhere else, you can't. I mean, there's, I just, there's, there's an argument there that's not a fair application.
And, and I would just like to say, you also have to remember, uh, city staff and resources that we have.
Right.
For a hundred and eighty days, then, you know, yeah, certain things, you know, how much time do we have to, uh, put out to, to, to regulate that and do the enforcement?
Right.
And whatever, so, you know, like you say, if it's up to you, just take all the variables into consideration. You know, a hundred and eighty days, hey, that's great, but how are we gonna regulate that as a, as a city staff?
Who, who's gonna be counting that?
Exactly.
Who's gonna be counting that?
First of all, the, the, it's not gonna be a cost center, it's gonna be a break-even or profit center, okay? So, and we're gonna have something for enforcement person, which is not part of the staff currently, I'm assuming, okay? Secondly, it's gonna be very easy to count the minutes, but they have to submit quarterly or monthly hot reports to the state of Texas.
Yeah, but, but we don't have a hot tax, we don't have a hotel occupancy tax yet.
Correct.
But the state does.
And even if we did, they do not report the number of days that is written. All they provide is a dollar amount of, of rental income received per quarter. That's all they put in and then that's all they're, that's all they're required. So the data that you receive or the state receives or even a city that has implemented a, a hot tax, uh, the information that you, that you get is limited only to gross, gross, gross receipts and how much you're paying the city, whatever percentage that is. But that's another, this is.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're a long ways away.
Correct, that's a totally different subject. But in regards to enforcement, are, are you the enforcer right now? Like right now, tomorrow someone calls, that's you.
Yes.
Is, is there, is, is that the plan or is there, is there?
So, and, and something like inspections, you know, there's, there's a company called Burrow Veritas that is used pretty much, you know, statewide, nationwide, that is essentially your, your, uh, code enforcement mercenaries. You know, they, they, they come in and do all your code enforcement. Um, and, and that's good because they, they bring an expertise to the table, which, you know, I'm not talking about Kevin in particular, but, you know, not all city managers are familiar with, you know, the electric code, residential code, fire code.
And then, and then what they do is they bring in, one person does the electric, one person does the fire, and so it's not one guy going out there and doing anything, you know, it's whatever the specialty is, is that they have a person that can go out there and.
Those costs are typically passed through to, to the applicant as well, um, you know, so.
And City of Wembley have contracted out some of this to some California-based company, I don't know the name of it, but I mean.
Yeah, that's, they don't have code enforcement right now. That's another thing we talked about sharing. But they do not have, they do not have code enforcement.
So that's a collection, they're maybe, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I wanna get back to my question is, I know that one of the concerns that our, you know, residents will have is, you know, property values. And if you get, allow STRs and you get a big concentration in one area, it could cause some problems with that. And so that, back to my question, is there a way to regulate that there's only a certain percentage per SF one?
You would need the data to back that up before you use that as a. So, so, let's, let's all think about it a bit more, you know, those little sections, you can say whereas, whereas a city has blah, 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 blah. Um, if, if, if one of those where asses related to property values, you have to have the data to back that up, right? And what you'll see in the, in the opinions that we'll email to you is cities often fail to address the where asses in a way, in a way that they should. Property values are a tough one, because property values up until six months ago have been rising everywhere, you know? For, with, with just for the last twenty years, you know?
Yeah.
And so any argument that, uh, you know, we said they're adversely affecting property values simply aren't supported by the facts. Now, if the fact is supported, then a hundred percent, it's a great, it's a great grounds to, uh, impose geographic limitations.
I was just curious.
But where you live, you live in an area where you have an HOA.
Right.
Which limits or prohibits STRs. Is that there from, from?
It's a great, it's a great way to prevent traffic. HOAs can adopt their regulations and prohibit STRs. And we, the city, can stand back and clap and say, we've always supported. And the thing is, is those property owners have contractual agreements with the mutual.
Why, because they have the HOA, they have trade, everyone would work with them.
Well, we used to.
It, it, I mean, Wood Creek used to be an HOA, so.
And, and, and even when we, even when we incorporated the HOA, it was still in place for a while.
So.
Yeah.
We're, we're not in the HOA business, we're in the city business.
Yeah, that would have to come from a citizen.
But if a bunch of neighbors got together and said, I guess to drive HOA.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, dropping HOA over existing properties, pretty much impossible, you know? Dropping an HOA over new properties, new developments, happens all the time. And if they're all existing HOAs that are in the city, uh, you know, it might be that you just go to those HOAs and, and say, hey, look, here's the form that, you know, we, we, we pull off the internet and perhaps your HOA would consider adopting a new deed restriction, which carries its own procedural requirements, right? You gotta get a certain percentage of homeowners to approve it, um, but yeah, HOA regu- regulations prohibiting STRs absolutely are enforcement.
See, if I give them a street degree to about six, seven.
Are you in an HOA right now?
No.
Okay, you don't have an HOA, then you can't just manifest one out of there.
Wood Creek HOA dissolved and our HOA had been part of it and went left it.
But, okay, so, so just a couple of little questions I had, you know, going back to that, okay? And, and SF one, not allowed, right? Well, SF four is already allowed.
Right.
So, so essentially, if you're one of those half a dozen or so SF four houses, you're already permitted, right? So with the others.
No, you're not permitted.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, essentially, you're, I mean, you have the right to do an S, SDR. So, um, I use the word permits sort of loosely.
Right.
But you're already there, so if you say, you know, the others that, um, that, that, you know, it, for STRs to be operating in this district, SF one, SF two, whatever, um, you know, then, then permitting and other requirements are, or, or you can go and say, well, I wanna, I want to change my zoning to SF four, you know? So then you have to go through a zoning, through a public hearing, through the, the two-hundred-foot thing, you've got.
Yeah, and there's no spot zoning either, so an individual home can't say, I wanna be SF four.
Oh, you can't spot.
We don't do spot zoning.
But I think, I mean, just to clarify, if, if you're in SF four right now, you are eligible to come here under these new, under this draft ordinance. You would be able to come to City Hall and say, hey, I live in SF four, I would like to apply for an STR.
Permit.
Permit. And Suzanne would be like, yeah, I mean, make sure, yes, sure enough, you're in one of the approved areas, uh, if you're on the list. Go make sure you meet these requirements, let us know when you want the house replaced inspected, uh, pay us your money, um, and take that, take that party off. Versus if someone in SF one were to come up, Suzanne would be like, wait, where do you live? No, I'm sorry, STRs aren't allowed there, we, we.
Not, not right now, there's no prohibition.
Well, there's, there's not, but I'll tell you, one of the confusions and why we had two assignments was because it specifically says in our ordinance is under SF four, STRs are allowed.
Yeah.
And because it says that, there was question, but, but the, the implication, what was implied, the spirit behind that was, well, if it doesn't say it is allowed, it's not allowed.
Yeah, and, and, and turn that on its head. The way it's actually done, it's, it doesn't say it's prohibited.
Yeah.
It's allowed.
Yeah.
And, and, and you're talking to someone that spent twelve years with red light camera litigation. Yeah, red light cameras were not specifically prohibited in cities all over because they didn't exist as a technology, right?
Right.
So we went in and said, great, there's nothing in here that says red light cameras aren't allowed, that means we are allowed to do it. You know, we litigated this issue, went to the Supreme Court, one federal court on this issue. We, you know, we, we are a, a, uh, kind of a, you know, who has the power, right? Uh, is it the legislative branch, the, the, the city council, or is it the people? Um, any power not specifically prohibited is reserved to the people, right? And so, uh, if we don't specifically tell them they can't do something and there's not a state law that otherwise prohibits, you know, prohibits it, typically they can do.
Yeah, which, which is why we were tasked with, hey, if nothing else, let's go ahead and get our ordinances updated so that it says STR not allowed.
Sure.
So that that's addressed, so.
And that may be where you guys are going, right? You know?
Well, I mean, that would be, yes, yeah. Yeah. Um, and then I just, I just can't help but feel, again, this is probably my military bearing, but I, I'm, I'm a guy who likes, I like boxes. I like this goes in this box and there's a distinct line and this goes in this box, I know that's not always right. Um, but I just can't help but feel that if you start with something like that, like with what we're proposing, this zone is allowed, this zone is not allowed, even though that may be a steeper hill to climb. I, I, I think that's worth climbing, because as soon as we start talking about these other variances, well, sorry, we're at twenty-eight percent, we only offer thirty percent, and that guy spoke before you and you've got a red roof and you really have to have a blue roof if you want an SDR.
Yeah, we're saying, you know, overregulate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, talk about, uh, illegal.
So, so again, I, I encourage you to read the, the, the two, the two, uh, case opinions. Um, and, and I'll come back here, uh, at the next meeting and provide you all with the detailed analysis of proposed changes as they are. Do you guys want me, uh, if there's something that I'd say or that I suggest this shouldn't be done, do you want me to provide an alternative?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
That way we're not having to come back a month later.
What's, what's the best course of action for this?
Well, I don't know the best course of action, I'm just being turned. You guys.
Legally.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, and look. Defensible.
That's, 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 that's a good guy.
Those are the cities that regulate SDR.
Um, I, I feel like the, um, you know, the eventuality, even if we stand on the hill, uh, no STRs, it's gonna be the hill that eventually we die on.
Yeah.
Um, so, if, for nothing else, in the contingency of, you know, assuming that it goes that, that direction and STRs aren't allowed. I guess the question is along the lines of where? So we can't really provide a prohibition, but we can provide distance and, and that's through the, the inspection, the permitting, the licensing, and, and all these sorts of things, so, so.
We, we may be able, we may be able to provide prohibition. Like Arlington does, they, they have done, they've done this and.
Chris is talking about the hill we die on and, and I, 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 I get what you're saying. As one who utilizes Airbnbs, I look for them in quiet places like Wood Creek because a group of my friends and I go, we rent a place where they're quiet, it's like living at home for us. But then you have that two percent that go wild, you know, and.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, uh, I guess where, where, what I'm getting at is, um, I guess the, the level to what we can provide these distance incentives, for example, if you need a license, could, could you need a new license or permit or whatever the gomoculture turns out to be for every reservation, for example, that's made on your house? So, okay, you're gonna have a hundred dollar fee that you have to pay to get your license per reservation or whatever per night, you know, something like that, that would kind of be an additional distance incentive on, you know, everything going on, an additional cost for, uh, someone up here graduated, uh, okay, you've done, you, you said the hundred and eighty days thing, you know, couldn't we shrink that to ninety days? And then if it gets above ninety, then that fee has been elevated to E, for example.
Yeah, and I'll look into that and, and, and give you awesome feedback on it.
Yeah, it's like, where, where have you seen that it has been kind of regulated and kind of drug linked to the pay provided?
But, but what, so, but what you're, what you're really doing, I mean, you're kind of being sneaky about it. What you're really doing is saying, I don't want SDR, I, I, the city or whatever, don't want SDR allowed, so we're gonna make this so unpalatable for you that we're gonna make it not worth it, right?
It sounds, it sounds like a tax to me.
Exactly, yeah, we're, we're gonna, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna cost, yeah, it's gonna cost you, uh, twenty thousand dollars and a, a new car if you want us to, you know, buy that, right? To, to the point where people are like.
Just for Roger.
Just for Roger.
Instead of mandating action, just provide an incentive or you want us to do this.
Well, I mean, you, like, look, there's a, you know, the distance incentive, I know where you're coming from, commission or on, I'm using that language, but, but this doesn't look like a disincentivization program, it looks like a very reasonable approach to ensure the health and safety of both occupants and neighbors, right? And if that carries a cost with it, and that cost is expensive enough, and you decide you don't wanna Airbnb your property, well, we'll understand, well, you use property or you don't wanna do that, and that certainly wouldn't be the reason we would do it, right?
Sure.
Um, yeah, and I'll look into, I'll look into, you know, all these things, but I think that if you looked at, uh, you know, looking at Arlington doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you're talking about. when you're talking about, you know, one of the six largest cities in the state of Texas with a massive, you know, sports and wetting lawn and Six Flags and this and that. I mean, it's just, it's it's not apples, oranges, it's apples to elements, right? Let's let's look at the Wimberlees, the, you know, the La Vistas, the the smaller bedroom communities, specifically rolling, ah, rolling wood. A little bit different.
But I think Bud's intention was, A, the cities could have tried and lost and lost, Arlington didn't. And and B, to use that as as specifically for the zoning, that that was his argument. Hey, Arlington has been successful because they've zoned it out. They said, this is the entertainment district and you can do it here. This is the residential district, that's that's not what it's for, we're not going to conduct business there, you can't do it there. That was my.
Yeah, well, I don't know what what I don't know what Bud said, so I don't want to.
Yeah.
But this thing, about a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and fifty days or a hundred and twenty days, is that something which could be put in place and be enforced? I'll let you guys know by next month.
Another thing that I'd like to know, because to what Lydia is saying, we're the same. I mean, we we use Airbnbs when we travel and, you know, being in a nice, quiet neighborhood for nice, quiet people, you go, you read the rules, it's like, okay, lights out at ten o'clock, you know, it's like, there's there's pretty strict rules about about how they're used. And I doubt those are city regulations, I'm pretty sure it's the homeowner regulation. But if again, to the incentive versus disincentive, if you incentivize, you know, so you you definitely want to have an S T R, that's fine, you know, we incentivize you to have certain rules beyond just the parking and the garbage and the and the noise. But, you know, if if you do these things, then you you got a better chance of, or you get off cheaper or whatever. The other one we we applied, you know, yeah, just like, that's not a good idea, we can't stop you, but you're going to hear from us all.
Yeah, I would I would suggest, you know, let's let's take a measured, methodical approach to this. Address what we can do, what we can't do, and what we're not quite sure a court may ultimately decide. I intend to give you all feedback on this. If I think there's something that needs to be changed, I'll provide an alternative, you know, version of it. And, you know, by next month, I I I don't I don't think we're going to need to have this whole discussion again.
Okay.
Right? I got a pretty good idea of what I believe the committee wants to see, and I'll give y'all the feedback at the last.
Suzanne, what about, I I feel like, or really, I think you remember, but I I think, so regarding our other task, to change the existing ordinances which was separate from these documents, I feel like we sent that up, did we or did we not?
Existing ordinances for?
To add the the verpage, S T R not allowed.
Did we already send that up? I thought we did.
That went to O R C.
Okay. It did not go to the council.
Right.
Okay, I knew we sent it somewhere.
Right.
Okay, we've seen it, but but it hasn't it hasn't been.
You can send that to council and and you can send, I can make the suggestion for y'all to send that, those, you know, that first document to council. And then I know that this sounds super weird, but for y'all to have a public hearing in March would be great. But you would need to make the motion to council to request the expenditure of that thousand dollars in this meeting. Because looking at the looking at the calendar, if you wait until your February first meeting.
We're going to miss the timeline.
You'll miss the timeline by like literally a day.
Okay.
So those two suggestions, I don't know who else can make it. Once you.
Yeah, I'm certainly advise not doing it.
Yeah.
Why not, like the weather, like, why not?
We don't, you've got to know what you'll be having a public hearing on. Okay, you haven't seen, you know, the changes.
Yeah, okay.
So do we want to do it tonight to set up your motion for March?
I think we should, that way.
Is it possible to reschedule for a day or another?
A hundred percent.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get all the.
Just be a special, just be a special P and Z meeting, rather than a P and Z meeting.
It would be, you'd end up having a special P and Z meeting on the first of March, no, I'm sorry, on the second of March.
Or the ninth of March, or the sixteenth of March, or the twenty-third.
No, I'm sorry, I meant for like the end of this month. Again. Instead of having a regular first, you can have a very first, so we can make the time for March.
You would still have to have you would have to, you're what you're having to do, the the suggestion I'm making is you're asking council's permission to spend a thousand dollars on the mail out that's going to go to every citizen in the city of Wood Creek, which generally costs up, you know, a thousand dollars because that zoning, just that one zoning document, the one fifty-six dot oh six two, I'm saying it backwards, that will affect everybody. So the soonest you could have a meeting, I have to recalculate, I just did it if you ask now and then council said yes now versus waiting till your February meeting. I can recalculate your cookies.
No, it's okay, I we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Well, and I guess where I think it's simply a question of schedule. Right, that's all you guys, of course, it's going to have to be a public hearing.
But if we do it, if we do it now, we're asking for permission.
You're asking for the the expenditure for a thousand dollars when you're ready with the documents.
Exactly, so we're not ready in March for whatever reasons that we can.
It's already been approved, so whenever y'all ready.
Yeah.
I think that's being equitable of the media after.
And then we just need to get their timing for making the announcement in paper or something like that.
Because this, Kana Hasi, he's going to do a analysis of of what you've seen a lot more than probably what you've seen in the past at the next meeting to give you a little bit of time to digest that, discuss that, see where you want to go. You know, it may be right here, it may be a slight variation. It may take time to maybe develop, maybe some suggestions in that document. And so, you know, it can happen in March, it can happen in May, but that way it gives you some time. You're not a scheduled dead date where we're scrambling to get it done because the most important thing is to get it done right.
Yeah.
And get it done correctly, so.
So we need to make a motion.
Yeah, so this 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 issue is is exactly what burned Austin in the code next issue. Because Austin did not properly send their mail out to everybody. It's if we didn't have to, we don't have to do that, this is just a regionalizing. And it could be a case, the third court of appeal said, no, this is this is the kind of thing that requires the mail out to everyone. So, lab Y'all are measured twice and kind of wants on this issue.
Okay, so if if, let me know when the workshop ends and then I can document that and we can make whatever motion y'all decide that you're going to make.
Okay. And we're going to make two motions, one for the request of funding, and two to go ahead and send our initial plan to recommend that the city council that they had no S T Rs for the current zoning.
Okay.
Why? I mean, if if shouldn't we await the input from the attorney before we make a recommendation to the city council?
I don't know. I mean, there 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 are two separate things and certainly.
You guys haven't had a public hearing on this yet.
So it, yeah, the process that we need to have a public hearing before we send to county.
Gotcha. Having the public hearing, having the public hearing on its own, J, you have a public hearing.
Okay. So scrap the second one, do the first one.
Yeah. Now, the rules are a little bit different, like, the rules are a little bit different for the adoption of tax. For the tax issue, I would say that that, you know, publication is the only thing that's required without notification of a public hearing. Having a public hearing is required, but notifying people of a public hearing for taxation is not required, you know. It's a quarks, quarks of the tax code.
That we love you for that.
Any, yeah, any additional discussion for item number five, the workshop to review this documentation related to S T Rs?
I think I've said as much as I need to say.
Okay, Suzanne, we've concluded our workshop.
So six twenty-five?
Six twenty-five.
Okay, all right, great. Whatever you're getting.
She goes to workshop.
Well, this this is part of it, where what we just did was was our workshop, it was kind of our. This was item number five, so then now we're continuing on with our agenda. So so now I'd like to entertain a motion to make a request to city council to have funding for a public hearing.
Okay. All right, I will make that motion that we request funding for a public hearing to review these documents.
In whatever mode they may be.
Yeah, and it can whatever form they may be at the time. Okay.
So you're making a request to council to fund the public hearing to review the documents?
Uh huh.
We need to say pending final approval of P and Z.
Yeah, that'd be smart.
Yeah, pending final.
Draft approval.
Yeah. Of P and Z.
In a second.
Pending draft approval by P and Z.
Uh huh.
I just understood that funding public hearing means all the requirements leading up to the public hearing.
And we'll include that using a thousand dollars.
So it's not just cookies and coffee, it's a lot of cookies and coffee.
I'll thank cookies. Okay, so can you read the motion back?
Sure, you're making a motion to make the recommendation to city council to fund a public hearing to review the documents pending final draft approval by P and Z.
Great, the short term rental.
Short term rental documents. Final draft, review the short term rental documents.
Yeah.
See it in the C N A, great.
I think that just needs to be a clarification here.
In a second.
Okay, gotcha. What do you think, Chris? There you go.
Any additional discussion on that?
No.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas Palm?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris Dany?
Aye.
Chairperson Andy Davenport?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lydia Johns?
Aye.
Okay, very good, I'll conclude that for five, our final item, discuss and take appropriate action on revising the short term rental documents. So.
That's pending, yes.
Yeah, I'm going to table it, yeah.
Yep, let's handle that. Pending legal.
Yes. What's what's the law with tabling? And we have to bring it up at the next meeting and table it in this meeting.
It's just the turntable is like.
We're on it.
Postpone.
I mean, there's nothing we can do really, otherwise, there's nothing we can do right now, so you're in good shape.
Do you want to make a motion?
I move that we, if you don't want to use table.
I can.
Okay, I move that we table the discussion of the revision of the short term rental documents pending legal review.
Move to table the revision of the short term rental documents pending legal review.
Yes, ma'am. And Thomas seconded.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion on that item? All right, we're ready to vote.
Commissioner Chris Dany?
Aye.
Chairperson Andy Davenport?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lydia Johns?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas Palm?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent, and that concludes our new business. Are there any other announcements? Very good, in that case, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
How did we adjourn?
Second.
The meeting.
Yes. Six twenty.
You must have been careful.
I was, I was gonna say, I can't say.
Is it counting gamble?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is like.
That company.
Well, yeah, I mean, Wood Creek was my.
On the.